Wednesday, June 8, 2016. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Ms. Melanie R. Mendiola to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors. The executive appointment of Mr. Pasqual V. A. Sablon to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. We were supposed to also do a confirmation hearing on Mr. Hardy V. to serve on the Guam Land Use Commission, but something came up at the last minute, so we're going to need to postpone his hearing. We will also be doing a public hearing on Bill Number 320-33 introduced by myself. It's an act to authorize the expenditure of funds from the Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund for the installation of power infrastructure in Aggett. And on Bill 321, also introduced by myself, relative to extending the payment period for the expired land for the landless contracts, and to waive the 10-year wait period for the transfer of property for exceptional cases. And we will also be conducting a public hearing on Bill 322-33, which is an act to rezone two lots in the municipality of Baragata from agricultural A Zone to school S1 Zone. That was introduced by myself. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on May 31, 2016, meeting the five-day notice requirement, and on June 6, 2016, meeting the 48-hour notice requirement. Thus, the requirements of the open government law have been met. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so please, for those who are giving testimony, please speak clearly into the microphone. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. today, Wednesday, June 8, on the confirmation hearings, and on the bills that are being heard today because we're going to try and get them put on the agenda for next week's session. We'll go ahead and we'll start this confirmation with a confirmation hearing of Ms. Melanie R. Mendiola to serve as a member of the Guam Port Authority Board of Directors. Just for the record, Ms. Mendiola, although her packet came down that her term length started in July 2014 and will end on June 30, 2017, the term will actually be for the remainder of the period up to 2017. So it'll be approximately a year. And so with that, we'll go ahead then, and I'll, we'll start with the individuals who have signed up to provide testimony on behalf of Ms. Mendiola. I'm going to call the first four people. Mr. Francisco Santos. Melanie, I'll call you up last. Sylvia Mendiola, did you want to give oral testimony, Ms. Mendiola? But you came in support of Melanie. You're welcome. Okay, all right. Okay. Jessica Stout. Okay, fine. Somebody here with the name of T. Necklin or Neelin? I can't read the... Oh, Ted Nelson. Okay. Vice Speaker. Quentos? Okay. Thompson? Kinney Bloss? Just in support. Okay. Susa Carbolito? Okay. Johnny, John Titano? Okay, fine. Thank you. Alicia Santo Tomas? Okay, fine. Doris Bloss? Okay, great. Well, that's an easy group. You're on a roll there, Melanie. Joanne Brown. And Ben Carbolito? Okay, good. All right. Okay. Mr. Santos?
To begin now, half a day. Buenos, good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Francisco Santos. I'm the chairman for the Port Authority Board. I'm honored and privileged to be here this morning to testify for Ms. Mendiola, for her confirmation, to become one of the board members for the Port Authority of Guam. And I firmly believe that the governor appointed her because she's young, she's very intelligent. Her background, I can really express her in the finance, in the administrative, also in the human relation, and also in grant writing. And I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, you and your committee, to find favor on her to be confirmed as one of the board members, to join us, to be with us, because we want to fulfill our mission in the port, and that is to move the port forward, and also to take care of our great asset, and that is our good, hard-working men and women for the Port Authority of Guam. And once Ms. Mendiola been confirmed, I believe that she can share with us her knowledge, her experience, also to the other board members. So I'm happy to be here this morning, and I humble, and I ask that you find favor on her, for her to be confirmed to serve as one of the board members for the Port Authority of Guam. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Santos. Vice Speaker Nelson?
May I, as a later speaker?
No, no, I'll defer to you.
It's up to you.
I'll defer to you. No, no, I'll defer to you.
Maybe it's first meeting.
My old partner in the 23rd Guam Legislature. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I certainly support also the appointment of Ms. Mendiola. Certainly, all the comments that our chairman shared about her, she's very dynamic. I mean, there's no doubt, in the time I've spent with her, and I've heard her in her programs that she's been involved with, I've heard her out in the community, and on the radio, and in the media about the work she's doing with Farm to Table. She's pretty dynamic. I look forward to what her future will be beyond this. You know, we meet a lot of people, but then I met her, and I said, wow, what a tremendous asset to our board. She's definitely sharp, she's smart, she's grounded, which I think is important. The innovative work that she's doing in the Farm to Table, and that's pioneering a certain different development of projects on Guam that take things to a new level. And in terms of our board and where we are with regard to the port and the current activities and development, and the progress that the Port of Guam is making, there's no doubt her presence and her engagement with us and with our board will continue to move the port forward, as our chairman mentioned, which I think is very, very important. So we certainly stand, management of the Port of Guam, stand in support of her confirmation. We certainly hope she receives your favorable vote. I don't doubt she will. I think as more people get to meet her and are exposed to her, I think they're going to see what incredibly dynamic individual she is. And certainly with our board, as you know, we've only had three current board members, which literally makes them the most minimum to meet quorum. So having an additional board member, and also the fact that she will add a female member to our board, I think is a tremendous asset. And as I mentioned, I certainly look forward to more incredible and dynamic things in her future, because I think she's got, she's got a long way to go ahead of us, and I think this is just one step. And we certainly welcome her interest in having community support, and also contributing to the Port of Guam. So I hope you, and I'm sure your committee, will give her a favorable vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Vice Speaker Nelson?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try. Thank you for allowing me. The appointment of Ms. Mendiola is a manifestation of the confidence that our current governor has on her, and I'm pretty sure that the governor has recognized her leadership, and she definitely will play a major role in the overall development of the commercial port. And I want to echo my support with the same in by Mr. Santos, and of course, my beautiful neighbor here. And I ask, Mr. Chairman, for your favorable approval, favorable confirmation. Thank you. I'll leave, maybe we'll finish though. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. I don't have any questions, so this panel. All right. I'll go ahead and call up Melanie. For full disclosure, Melanie and I go attend the same church in Mangila. I've known her parents for forever, and I'm very much familiar with your Farm to Table. In fact, maybe we'll take that and elevate it to a port-to-store-shelf concept. Okay? So please, go ahead.
Chairman Ada and senators of the 33rd Guam Legislature, who will eventually read the proceedings of today, I thank you for taking the time to add me to the agenda to discuss my nomination for the Board of Directors for the Port Authority of Guam. I further thank my friends and family, and my colleagues at the Port Authority for joining me today through their presence and testimonies of support. I wanted to share a bit of my background, which I believe will equip you to make a sound decision regarding my appointment, but if you think, Senator, that I can, if you like me to kind of hurried along, or you're already familiar, then please let me know, and I can do that as well. I can adjust as well.
Take your time.
My full name is Melanie Rose Bloss Mendiola. My mom is Sylvia Mendiola. She's here with me today. And my dad is Frederico Wilbacher Mendiola, and he passed away in 2012. I'm also joined by a representative from my brother's family, Noah Mendiola, and he's sitting next to my mom. I have one sister, Jennifer, who passed away in 2013. I live behind, I reside in Paget, Mangila. I live behind the old Kinney's Cafe, which belonged to my grandfather, and then was run by my uncle. And the Bloss family is here to support me, and my family in the CNMI and FSM, the Wilbackers and the Mendiolas, have been involved in government service, and are a lot of the inspiration why I'm here today, in addition to the Bloss family, who's been involved in politics on Guam for as long as I can remember. As far as my educational background, I'm a '99 graduate of the Academy of Our Lady of Guam. I double majored in economics and East Asian studies at New York University, and I graduated there in 2003. I received my MBA from the University of Guam in 2012, and currently I'm pursuing a PhD in financial planning from Kansas State University. I'm done with all my classes and my preliminary exams, so next is just basically the dissertation process. I've been fortunate in my career to wear a variety of hats. I worked as an analyst at HSBC Bank in New York. I was a financial advisor at Merrill Lynch here in Guam for three years. I was doing investment management for individuals as well as institutions. I spent a short time at ANZ, and lastly, at Empower Retirement, formerly known as Great West. They are the government contractors for the retirement plan, the defined contribution retirement plan. I was a retirement plan counselor, and during my four years with that organization, I met with thousands of employees and conducted over 500 seminars concerning the importance of saving towards a comfortable future. I'm the current, I'm the current project director at Farm to Table Guam, a not-for-profit to assist farmers and agricultural-based businesses in growing their business. And I realize that this seems like a departure from my formal finance background, but it's very interesting how my roles in finance have prepared me for this job that I hold today. I supervise 17 employees, four of whom are physically disabled, and I'm very proud of all the work we do, the progress we've made, and the community's reception to what we have to offer, which is to encourage individuals and businesses to support your local farmer. With regard to community involvements, I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Guam Girl Scouts, an organization I've been involved in for the last six years. I'm also the treasurer of the Tourism Education Council. I'm a member of the Guam Young Professionals, the YMLG Women's Auxiliary, and a national organization called the American Council on Consumer Interests. As far as any special talents, I enjoy writing quite a bit. I've written stories for local magazines, including Guam Business News and the Marianas Business Journal. I've written over $2 million in successful grant funding, and I'm waiting on about $1 million in notification as to whether or not the organizations that I've helped are going to get them or not. And a few of your local businesses will tell you that I've written their business plans so that they may seek financing at our local banks. Among them, there's a restaurant across the street called 9th Street Rotary. There's my brother's surf shop down in Tumon called Lotus Surf Shop. There's Gabriel's House of Pasta, which is expanding to Tumon. And lastly, in the academic sphere, I am a published author. I presented on college student financial wellness, which was subsequently turned into a paper, which is in press for the Journal of Financial Counseling and Planning. I also presented at a national conference for the Association for Financial Counseling and Planning, and recently, the Korea Financial Planning Association. I did a seminar on income disparities and marital arguments, so kind of like how you argue based on who makes more in your relationship. As far as religious and political beliefs, I am a Catholic and a registered parishioner at Santa Teresita Church in Mangila. I attend at 8:00 a.m. with my mom, and I see you all the time, Senator. And I'm also a registered Republican. I have not held positions in either of these capacities in the church or government of Guam, and this appointment would be my first. Why do I want to serve on the Board of the Port Authority of Guam? There are two reasons why I want to serve on the port board, both of which involve my dad, Fred Mendiola. After his retirement from the U.S. Air Force, he joined the port for eight years, where he served as procurement administrator under, at first under David Tidingo as director. During that time, he oversaw the acquisition and development of many of the port's assets. He had tremendous respect for the importance of this agency, which he instilled in me at quite an early age. And the second reason is because of what my dad called the whole-man concept, in my case, the whole-woman concept. My dad told me that when he was up for promotion in the Air Force, these were the pieces of evaluation that demonstrated if you were worthy of attaining the next level. In my father's case, it was chief master sergeant in the U.S. Air Force. I'm sure you know this, Mr. Chair, but for those not familiar, whole-man concept takes into account academic aptitude, demonstrated leadership, demonstrated moral conviction, and ongoing community service. I have steadily garnered increasing levels of responsibility and experience in all my roles, at school, work, and the community. When asked by the governor's office if I would be willing to serve, sentimental ties aside, I thought it would be a great fit. The Port Authority is an autonomous revenue-generating agency with a lot of responsibilities, including 365-day, 24-hour operations. There are revenue concerns, overall fiscal management, being conscientious of local and maritime jurisdictions, there's employee relations, there's stakeholder management, there's strategic planning, there's sustainability planning, and when I found out that there's only three board members, I said, wow, maybe they could use my help. I do have sentimental ties to the port. I know employees from my time at retirement, and through my dad. My cousin Doris is here as well, she's an employee of the port. And I believe that I have the willingness and capability to take part in all these areas of leadership, as demonstrated by my past experience. What I believe I bring to the port, I think I'm a bridge builder. I like to connect people to information and to resources. And when, for example, when I was at retirement, it was about encouraging people to save and to do for themselves, not to wait for the government of Guam to do it for them. At Farm to Table, I find that farmers are often intimidated by the prospect of working with big customers like hotels, or going after federal grants, and I am their partner, and I pride myself on helping them find resources to build their business. Strategic planning, I've been trained formally and informally about the importance of proper planning. I've learned the hard way when things have not worked out, and I've learned the pain and hardship of last-minute or ill-planned decisions. I've also learned the pain of bad decisions and the long-term consequences. The importance, I know, I also bring the importance of stakeholder management. Farm to Table runs largely on collaboration with government agencies, private companies, and the goodwill of the people of Guam. And I realize that in the event that I am confirmed, I will serve on the board because elected leaders have put their trust in me. And I think the only way to do that will be to build and strengthen collaborative relationships with port leadership, the legislature, Adaloupe, and the customers and tenants of the agency itself. I bring a high level of ethics, which I have learned through my upbringing, as well as in my day-to-day job responsibilities over the last 15 years of working. The board and its members answer to the people of Guam, and anyone who believes in God believes that we answer to Him as well. I take my fiduciary responsibility seriously, and in my current job, particularly with regard to federal funds and assets, I know that doing the right thing is really no joke. And sustainability, I think I bring a perspective about sustainability. My role at Farm to Table is to rely less on food being imported, and more on food that we grow ourselves. This, however, does not remove the need for a Port Authority of Guam. Farmers need supplies, building materials, producers, and a lot of my producers aspire to the point of exporting off of this island. If the port is poorly managed, the farmer growing our food pays, as do the rest of the residents of our island. And that's pretty much what I have. I thank you for listening to my statement concerning joining the Board of Directors of the Port Authority of Guam, and I humbly ask for the committee's confirmation during the next legislative session.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think you did an excellent job in preparing your remarks. I must say, I think you anticipated many of the questions, and certainly, I don't have, I don't have a whole list of questions. I do have, I do have, thank you, Cinderella, for doing this. I do have one question, and obviously, the media has been reporting a lot about the YTK, the arbitration result, the potential $14 million liability, and if, you know, that's an additional burden on the, on the port. Have you given any general thought as to maybe how, if it came to the point that the port would have to pay that $14 million, how would, how would you generally address that kind of situation?
Yes. Thank you for that question, sir. I think, what I do know is about as much as I think the general population is what we see in the news and the media. So I don't know all the facts to be able to make a good decision, an educated decision at this point. However, when I think about unexpected, I call them, in financial planning, we call them income shocks. An income shock is when something happens to your balance sheet, whether it's your personal finances. When it's, when it's your personal finances, an income shock would be like sickness, or an accident, or a house burning down, right? This, to me, is an income shock, this would be an income shock to the government of Guam, and to the Port Authority specifically. Some of the questions that I'd want to, when I would look at the various solutions, some of the things that I'd take into considerations would be, which of the various options towards meeting that debt would impact the progress of the Port Authority of Guam's strategic plan the least? Which of those options will have the smallest adverse effect in both the short term and the long term, not only to the balance sheet of the Port Authority, but as well to the people of Guam? And I'd also like to see, as a member of the Board of Directors, that there are proper controls in place so that the risk of things such as a bad lease, or any other risk, are minimized. But I think in answering your question as far as, have I given any thought to how I would handle a $14 million liability on our books? Is that kind of what you're getting at here? I think that in business, I believe that the rules, and I'm not an accountant, but I do believe that the rules of, generally, when you, when you run a business, you can either generate more revenue through greater volume, or you can generate revenue through higher prices. You can generate cash through the disposition of assets. You can generate cash through the removal of expenses, such as payroll, and you can free up cash, another way is to free up cash flow through financing. Each one of those solutions, or each one of those options, I think, has a lot of implications. They have a lot of implications to the stakeholders, which might be the employees of the Port Authority, to the people of Guam, to the long-term future of our island considering debt service, to the ability of our port to provide 365-day, year, 24-hour service if it were the removal of assets. So at this point in time, I guess I have a kind of a steep learning curve ahead of me to know what's, what the port, what we're going to do. Having said that, I am very confident that the port has a very skilled director, and that the Board of Directors is also highly experienced, and that we'd be able to help facilitate the port through this income shock.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Senator? Okay. Well, the sooner I get you off that table, the sooner I can get your confirmation packet circulated, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming down to show your support for Melanie. We're going to go ahead and move on now to the executive appointment of Mr. Pasqual Sablon to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Signing up to provide testimony, Vice Speaker Nelson? Testimony on Pasqual Sablon?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead and grab a seat. Mr. Michael Borja? Mr. John Titano? Mr. Angel Santos? So to let the record show. In favor? Okay. Just to show, oh, so did you change, oh, in favor, Mr. Angel Santos in favor, Mr. Mike Borja, and then Vice Speaker Nelson. So you can go ahead and start with you, you're the first one on the list.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ted Nelson, and I live up in Marukay. And I'm here to support the nomination.
Okay, let me make that correction, because you checked off "not in favor."
Who?
You checked off "not in favor."
No, that's not...
Okay, well, I'm just...
Contradicting myself.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Please correct.
You are in favor, okay.
Yes.
All right. All right, please proceed. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I believe that Pasqual would be a person in the board who would be sympathetic to the needs of the client of the Chamorro Land Trust. I've watched him in action, and I believe that he would listen, and I hope that the board, Chamorro Land Trust, will be more friendly, more compassionate in addressing the needs of the Chamorro, we're involved with the Land Trust. It's a reality that there are 9,000 applicants waiting, Mr. Chairman, and I believe that the government should bear the burden in paying for the survey. And I believe that the government should bear the burden in paying for the survey of the land, because, Mr. Chairman, this government owes the people of Guam over $150 million for land taking, for roads, and other public uses without compensation. And with this in mind, I ask your blessing to consider this point in addressing the needs of the, all the clients of the Chamorro Land Trust. Nine years, or 10 years, is too long to wait. Some of them have passed away. And I hope that with Mr. Pasquale being the chairman, he'll be able to work with you and address the other, other needs of the Chamorro Land Trust. I have faith in Pasquale, and I have faith with the Chamorro Land Trust. And also, I must say that with your leadership, we are really progressing, and I do hope that we'll be able to satisfy thousands of our Chamoros to obtain the peace of the rock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Nelson. Mr. Borja?
Good day, Mr. Chairman, Senator Attada. My name is Mike Borja, I'm the Administrative Director of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and the Director of the Department of Land Management. I'm also formerly a Commissioner for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and its Acting Chairman for a period prior to my current position. I wholeheartedly support Mr. Pasquale Sablon to continue on in his role as a Commissioner and as the Chairman of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. In the several years that he's been on the Commission, working with me, both as a Commissioner and also as the Administrative Director, he's, he's kept us in check. He's assured that we follow the processes that are necessary to ensure that the findings from the public auditor are, are taken care of, that rules and regulations, as we, as we have been, been working on, proceeds through the process, and that as we move on to try and, and, and obtain the, the approval process to begin the commercial leasing of properties. We've worked very well together. He's a very compassionate man. There are many times in which we do have issues that come before the Commission, which, for my part, I find that it's necessary for the Commissioners as a whole to, to understand what's going on, and then, so they meet with these individuals at our meetings on a monthly basis to understand what, what kind of issues are, are up and of concern. And also, we also always receive walk-ins at our meetings, people who do have issues. And he's a very compassionate individual, and as we all try to help in ensuring that those who are currently on the lands or are in need of some other kinds of assistance, that we can work to the best of our ability to, to obtain that. Our current goal now is to try and, trying to get some commercial leasing. It's a, it's a hard and a long process, that it hasn't reached its full potential yet, but we all find that that's the, the one avenue that we would have, to attain some of the things that Vice Speaker Nelson had mentioned, in order to finish off and with the lands, so that they're fully usable by all the, all the lessees that are going to be placed on the land, or who are currently there. The surveying of the properties is, is a very important goal for us, and that's what we're trying to attain at this time. But the infrastructure, too, is, is the most, one of the most important things, and we're trying to find ways to attain that through the most cost-efficient ways. Mr. Pasquale Sablon is, is on that path, working with me on these things, and me working with whatever the policies that are set forth by the Commissioners, and keeping the Commission in good standing financially, and also to have the, the, the tools that we need to do our work in taking care of all the clients that we have to deal with on a daily basis. So I ask for this, this committee's support for his nomination, and for this legislature's approval for his nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. Senator, do you have any questions? None? Okay. Yes, sir, yes.
Mr. Chairman, you know, we, we might have to try a different approach in this granting of land to the land, our Chamoros, rather than continue to wait another, another five, 10 years. I am suggesting that perhaps with the revenue that's coming in, the board can look into the possibility of getting a loan immediately, probably with the Bank of Guam, to survey the land that they can ask for. The idea of a subdivision is an expensive one. It would take about probably $25,000 to develop each, each land. I am suggesting that perhaps if the applicants are there, are willing to accept half-acre land for their land, which they can both farm and also build, I think that would be a quicker way to give out the land to the Chamoros. It bothers me, like, to see all these millions and millions of square meters of Chamorro land not being occupied, being, not being used ever since Angel Santos. And I would like, perhaps, to see whether we can do the agricultural subdivision, we can cut up a half-acre, that way we don't have to worry about much infrastructure, sewer and so forth. So those are two other points that I'd like to bring to your attention, and perhaps the board might want to consider, or review it, the possibility of two things, obtaining a loan, and to subdivide the land into half-acre land for immediate disposition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker Nelson. Certainly, your comments are noted, and it's also recorded, and so I will take note of that. Thank you very much. I don't have any questions of this panel, so thank you very much for stepping forward. Senator, did you have, none? Okay. I'd like to go ahead and call up now Mr. Pasquale Sablon, and you can go ahead and provide your testimony.
The previous speaker, he mentioned the word, income shock. Golly, if I were competing with her, I think I would just concede. No, Mr. Chairman. I guess because I already laid my foundation at the first, what I call this hearing that I had. Good morning, Buenos, done half a day, Mr. Chairman, Senator Attada, in a twenty-three dress, registered to Guam and the people of Guam. Don't close this just mercy for the opportunity afforded for my appearance before the committee. As I present my testimony for reappointment to serve as the chairman for an additional three years with the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, I'm humbly honored by the Governor Carvo's entrustment to serve the people of Guam in this capacity. To briefly highlight my appointment in this position, was initially appointed on June 4, 2014, and 20 months later, I was appointed chairman of the CLTC. Here I am again, appointed to serve on the CLTC from April 11, 2016, to April 19, 2019. I'm honored to be appointed by the government, which I accepted with the conviction that I will try to be an effective member. I think I'm reading the, I have the modified. Anyway, during the period, I have availed my services to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission on several issue. Concerns and issue have been realized. The evident issue and important in identifying CLT unregistered properties, which is approximately 3,500, in order, in order that we may be able to perhaps accommodate the overwhelming number of applicant whom have yet to be afforded Chamorro Land Trust property, addressed by the CLTC in one of its priorities, more so than those applicant who have been waiting for a couple of decades. Another issue is a commercial lease that appears to be grossly misinterpreted by the Chamorro Land Trust applicants. And thus, perhaps, at means of transparency to the public, it may be the best interest of the CLTC to conduct village public hearing in a specific area of intended commercial lease, to inform and educate the public of the objective of this particular type of lease, and placing emphasis, emphasis that intended commercial lease. Mr. Chairman, I believe what we did here already, we already complied with the law that mandated us to, to conduct a public hearing, and we will be working with the other, I will be working with the other Commission members to discuss this and transmit it maybe in the very near future to you, as a mandate by the public law. It also been realized that there's a need to summon amendment made, an assisting mandate of the Chamorro Land Trust, that may eventually recommend it, as well as rules and regulation, policies and procedures as defined and intended for. In order for the CLT to progress and be effectively and accurately meet its goal and objective, as well as to initiate recommendation for amendment, the CLTC assisting mandate and the media recruitment of employment program coordinator and administrative assistant is realized to, for more effective and purposeful planning of its program and technical aspect of the processing of the applicants. If you would note, on May 18, 2016, the CLTC corresponded and transmitted to Attorney General of Guam its rules and regulations for Chamorro Loan Guarantee Fund, for review and approval prior to true transmitting to the governor and subsequently to the legislature for its adoption. CLTC has been afforded opportunity to avail themselves with the audit result that were conducted by Angel Santos, in which several of his recommendation were taken in consideration and initiated by the CLTC in fiscal year 2015. As a result, I would like to commend the administrative director and the CLTC staff for their accomplishment. The Chamorro Land Trust Commission was created to administer Chamorro Land Trust Act and to manage Chamorro homeland, and I'm prepared and honored to protect and manage Chamorro homeland in the best interest of the Chamorro people. Mr. Chairman and Senator Attada, at this time, I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude for the establishment of a special account to deposit all commercial leases revenue for surveying and infrastructure development of CLTC properties, and I appreciate your continued support with this regard. I solicit your trust and confidence to confirm my appointment to serve you and my people in the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Although I'm still navigating myself in the CLTC program, I'll try to answer questions. As I mentioned before, CLTC is a big program, and really, there's a lot, lot of things that we have to look into and work on, you know? So, I, I am determined to work on that, and of course, to you folks, and also, we can do whatever we can do to facilitate the processing and meet the goals and objective for the Chamorro Land Trust. Jesus mercy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sablon. Senator, did you have any questions? Sure.
Mr. Sablon, I'd just like to thank you for accepting the governor's appointment to the position, and I look forward to working with you and with the committee, and what we can do to assist in any way we can. Thank you, and you have my support, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Senator.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sablon, I noticed that, of course, you're, you're not new to serving on boards and commissions. According to your packet here, you served as a member of the Guam Visitors Bureau on their board.
Yes.
For, for a year. You were the chairman and a member of the Guam Land Use Commission for six years.
Yes.
And then you were also a member of the Aganhaite Municipal Council for eight years. And so, I'm happy to see that you certainly have, have had a, quite an extensive community service exposure. Now, with the Chamorro Land Trust, you know, it's, most of the available land on island actually come under the jurisdiction of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. And so, it is that commission that really is the one that's going to, to direct the development and the leasing of those properties. And so, certainly, your involvement, you know, the role of the Commission members is going to be very key. Now, the past couple of years, there's been some legislation that has been passed to, to, to help the Chamorro Land Trust to move forward. One, for example, we know that one of the, one of the basic reasons why Chamorro Land Trust has not been able to issue out leases is because it needs to get the land surveyed. At the very least, you need to survey the property, and then, of course, we need to bring in the infrastructure, at least bring in the roads and whatnot. But it hasn't had the money to do that. Now, the law does allow for certain Chamorro Land Trust properties to be leased out as commercial leases. So, so that then gives you a vehicle to generate revenue. And the law also is very clear that those revenues that are generated goes into a specific account that will be solely for the purpose of surveying and for infrastructure.
Yes, yes.
So, given all that, can you maybe give me your thoughts or your vision as to, how do we move forward now, or do you still need more tools to be able to move forward to get that next acre of land surveyed? What do you think are the next steps that need to be taken?
What we're doing now, Senator, is we're preparing a plat, where, you know, showing how big the lot is, and how many lot can, can be subdivided, you know, on that plat. And at the same time, too, we're looking at the revenue that we have. So, what we can do, once we have enough revenue, we, you know, we can put all those plat together and. A. and bid it out, you know, to to a licensed surveyor. I came across a surveyor that was the first one on that, his client was the first one on that plat. He told me that he's charging his client $2,700. But if he would only be given to survey the whole plat, it would bring down the price to $1,500. So it's a must that, which is what we're doing now, we're with the the survey division within the land management, you know, working on a plat of all available property. And and at the same time, we're looking into the revenue that we have. So we can, once we feel that we're comfortable that we can bid it out to the various surveyor, I believe that that will be the most economical and maybe the best process. Because if you assign one surveyor to do that whole plat, that surveyor would know all the missing balance of that particular, we could say, big chunk of property. And he would lessen his cost to the client. That's, you know, but of course, we need that revenue, that's why we need to work on that commercial lease so we can transmit it to you people, to you, Senator. And once we get all the approval, we can start leasing it out.
All right, and you do realize that when you transmit that list of properties that are designate to be designated for commercial leasing, that really it's transmitted to the legislature for information only. Okay, we don't have to introduce a bill to accept that and all that. So the sooner you get that down here, you would have met that requirement of law. And then you can start going out and actively marketing those pieces of property. But then there are probably also other income revenue potentials out there that have not yet been, I don't know, I mean,
Explore.
Have, I mean, are, is the, is the, are all the leases and licenses, are they current in terms of payment? We know, for example, that we had a case of one lessee that was delinquent for as long as a year. And so I hope that Chamorro Land Trust will actually then, you know, take a look at those actively and maybe start start generating some of that, bringing in some of the funds that are needed.
If you look actually in my background, Senator, I was a, my profession, I'm an accountant, I'm a compliance officer. And I think I know what particular company referring to. In fact, I was the one that made that motion to terminate that company, you know, or that leasing. Because I cannot accept that, you know, it's over a year of delinquent and not paying anything. So I'm really on top of those things.
Tell me something, you know, Mr. Borja, in his testimony indicated that oftentimes, I guess you, or at times, you would keep, keep the the commission in check. Do you think that's healthy?
Oh, yes, I have to, you know. Well, of course, I am not, I don't control them and all these things, but I keep them up to date and, you know, I remind them and I lead them, I push them, this is our focus, this is our objective, let's start moving, you know, rather than to each his own.
I think it's healthy.
Thank you.
Just to let you know, I think it's healthy that we keep each other in check.
Thank you, Susan.
And that way, we're always on top of our game.
Yes.
I don't have any further questions. None? Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
Now, I, you know, I did meet with you yesterday and had a brief discussion. And I like that one philosophy that you had about doing a job versus losing your job. What was that again?
I'd rather lose my job for doing my job than to lose my job for not doing my job.
Good, that's very wise.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we, I would ask that if there's, if there's any further testimony to be provided, that that written testimony be provided no later than 4:00 PM today. Because we will be working on the confirmation packets and hope to report it out to on next week's session. So thank you very much for that. We're going to go ahead and then continue on to the next bill, which is Bill Number 320-33. It's an act to authorize the expenditure of up to $30,000 from the Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund for the installation of power in Basic Lot 480 Santa Ana Municipality of Aguej. Can we get those? So we'll just take a few minutes here to give an orientation of what we're looking at. Do you have the? Where's that sketch map that shows the loop? There we go. Okay. So the area we're talking about is basically, there's an area in here. All this in here is Chamorro Land Trust property. And the area that we're looking at that's kind of in the dark right now is this area here. Many years ago, this here is the the road Route 1 that goes towards Yumadik. Aguej is back here. This is the Santa Ana Chapel. Now, many years ago, Guam Power Authority ran a power line into this area and ended right here. And so by doing that, only this, the people that's in here, go back, go back to the sketch. Only the people that were in here were able to benefit from those, the power line infrastructure that was put in. Later, GPA also ran another loop that came up through here, but ended right here. So we got this big gap. And and right now, we have people that are, we got a house that's living in here. Can you go ahead and get the next slide? Okay. There. So, so we have a situation where the power line ends right about somewhere here. The power line ends somewhere here. We got a house that's already been built. We've got leases that have already been issued to these land trust recipients. They're already starting to clear the land so that they can build. But they don't have power. The house that lives here, they they went ahead and made the additional investment of building, purchasing a generator, and that's basically how they they power up their house on an ass-needed basis. Now, GPA has estimated that it's going to cost probably about up to upwards of about $30,000 to be able to bring the power line into here to be able to service this area. If that is done, this next slide here would show the number of lots which have already been leased out, have already been surveyed, that will be benefited by the new power infrastructure that will go in. Can you go ahead? Next one. So these here are, is that the lots? No, the next one. So if the power infrastructure was brought into here, you would basically have all these lots here that would benefit from an investment of about $30,000 to put in the infrastructure to service that area. By the way, also, the the house that's already located in here, they already have water. There's water infrastructure that's available. And so they're, 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 they're able to at least maintain some quality of life while they're there. I'm going to go ahead and call up Ms. Angela Tenorio, Ms. Julia Gumatautau, who have signed up, who have signed up to provide testimony, Mr. Mike Borja. Speaker Nelson, did you want to testify?
I'll support.
You'll support? Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me correct that here, because you put down not in favor. Don't worry, I got your, I got your back. All right, so, Mr. Tenorio. Okay, can you go ahead?
Yes.
All right, so Angela.
My name is Angela Tenorio. I am in support of Bill 320. The reason for that is because the house that Senator Tom Ada was talking about is our residence. We have running water, the house is built, and my mom and I have a medical disability. I've been diagnosed with cancer, and she just had a recent open heart surgery in 2014. And because of our health, we have to run the generator the days when it does get hot. We have the pedestal ready for GPA. And also, I have a daughter that's asthmatic. And because the three of us all have a medical disability and some sort of health problems, we've actually been living and running the generator as needed. And I just find it inconvenient for us because the houses in Aguej, the area that we're at, it's us and a couple of people without power right now. And my mom, I think, she might have something to say. My stepdad died building the house for us. And we have been going to try to see what we could do to bring the power into the area. And we ran out of lock-in dead ends. And thank you to Mr. Borja and Blaine for coming out, and especially you for coming out to the residence to take a look at the property and see that we are asking for help. And we ran into so many dead ends. So at this point right now, I'm just asking that you be in favor of this bill. Thank you.
How long has it been since that residence was built?
It's funny that you said that because my mom also paid the application for Guam Power Authority. There's been already a work order. And they cannot do anything because there's no power pulse into the area we're at. So the house is cement, it's semi-concrete, it's fully built, there's water, running water. And we're stuck at a dead end. She paid for an application at GPA. And there has been already a service order since the year 2012. 2012, and no power pulse.
Okay.
Yep, yes.
All right, Ms. Gumatautau?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I support the bill also, sir, but my theory here is they're assessing me $20,000 for the poles. And, you know, I understand if that's a private property, but that's a government property. And, you know, I tried every procedure to go, I went also when Monty Muffin was still alive, seeking for help. So I'm glad that you finally came out and saw what kind of status we're sitting on, on the land. So this is our, you know, way of bringing it out to the Chamorro Land Trust people that before they issue out the land, make sure that the infrastructure is there because I'm struggling right now.
All right, well, Mr. Borja, maybe you can go ahead and add to the discussion.
Again, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Senator Ada. I'm Mike Borja, the administrative director of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and the director of Department of Land Management. On Bill Number 320, both the CLTC and land management have reviewed it, and we have some comments on this one. The Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund has received revenue this calendar year primarily from land for the landless default account payments. Of the 391 land for the landless default accounts, only 39 responded to our notices and paid their accounts in full, and 41 others responded with an appeal request. The lots remain, the land lots of the remaining 311 default accounts will be transferred to CLTC with no further revenue collection expected. There are currently no major land sale authorizations in the legislative docket where payment will be deposited into the Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. The vast majority of Chamorro Land Trust lands lack any form of infrastructure and have not been surveyed into lots to be leased to waiting applicants. The CLTC's intention is to use revenue deposited into this infrastructure and survey fund for the survey and land registration of CLTC properties. Based on estimates from the Department of Land Management Survey Division, the scope of work would be around $1 million with contracted work to be performed over a three-year period. This fund was to supplement other CLTC revenue with the intention of having appropriation introduced, legislation introduced this summer. By authorizing expenditure funds from the Chamorro Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund, it would reduce the fund by almost 25%. Furthermore, it was set a precedent of selectively assisting the infrastructure of single lessees despite the fact that a couple thousand others are also in a similar need for this kinds of, kind of assistance. However, this bill does highlight the plight of CLTC lessees who face, that they face in having no infrastructure and the high costs involved in just obtaining water and electricity where it is not available. When CLTC eventually enters into the limited leasing of properties for commercial use, and those payments are deposited into this survey and infrastructure fund, it is our hope that the fund would grow to a size where funds could be used to fully coordinate infrastructure plans for CLTC properties. Piecemeal expenditures of this fund will either prevent or significantly delay the execution of more cost-efficient infrastructure development plans. While we commend the need to assist a constituent in need, and we also have a compassion that we understand that we need to do this, the long-term implications of this legislation could be detrimental to the intent of the fund. Accordingly, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission does not offer its support to Bill Number 320-33. You know, the Guam Power Authority provides a service in which they make money from. The cable companies provide a service to people in which they, they, they make, they make money from as well. They lay out the infrastructure so that you can have the telephone and the internet service to your house. The same should be with the Guam Power Authority. It isn't, it, this is not coming across private properties. This is, these would be poles that would be erected onto rights of ways, which is designed just for what they're, their, the intended purpose is for them to put those poles. So that they can go out and serve customers who are going to be paying into their system. And that's exactly where I think these kinds of money should be coming from. And these kinds of infrastructure contracts or processes should be coming from directly as well. It's, it really should be for the water and the power companies who are there to make money from customers, to serve those customers by installing the infrastructure to them and then realizing the revenue from the customers that are there as well. I understand the plight of Mrs. Gumatautau and Ms. Tenorio. And, you know, we do have a compassion for this, but we have thousands of others with similar plights that we deal with on a regular basis, but we have no, no means for taking care of these. One of the things that we would like to try and do, once commercial funding or commercial leasing goes into effect, hypothetically, let's say, over a 30-year period, we're going to be able to raise $30 million. Then we could then go out and and probably be able to get a loan on that kind of guaranteed income so we can begin doing these kinds of infrastructure development. Because it is a very costly thing for capital improvement projects such as infrastructure, the laying of water, the laying of sewer lines, and the, and the construction of power lines. Most importantly, as, as you well know, most of our land, not including down here, is over the water aquifer of Guam. And it's very important that we get that, we put down the sewer lines for these kinds of lands because septic tanks are not the right thing to do. of lands because septic tanks are not the right thing to do over the water that serves the entire island. So it's, you know, we're looking long range to find ways to try to do the infrastructure. And when you can get into much larger plans, it can be more economical. Whereas this thing for $30,000 or $20,000, as you quoted, is probably for four power poles. And that I find so hard to believe that the Guam Power Authority cannot erect those poles themselves in order to obtain more paying customers because it really should be their role and their function in this whole process as a power company. They need to look at themselves more like a business rather than a bond-paying organization.
Okay. Well, obviously, we differ. We differ in how, you know, it's kind of like we have an elephant in the room, and then to the question of how do you eat that elephant? We can wait until we get all these properties leased out commercially so that we can build up that fund, and then go out there and just, you know, eat that elephant in one bite. Or we can eat that elephant one bite at a time. And I guess I subscribe to the latter in that, you know, here's a situation that was obviously set up to, I mean, the roads are paved, water is in there, for, you know, people have built, in this case, Ms. Gumatauto has built a home, had a pedestal, waiting for GPA to come, but actually Chamorro Land Trust is the developer and should have brought in that infrastructure. We can sit here and debate, you know, who's right, who's wrong. In fact, the arguments that you raise are very valid. But the fact of the matter is that, and it may be short-sighted on my part, I can see the long-term vision of what you're looking at, and I can understand the concern that this is going to open up Pandora's Box, and we're going to do a little here, a little there, and a hodgepodge of development, you know, as opposed to really one focused movement forward. But the fact still remains is that we have about $100,000 sitting in that account. We've, you know, GPA has basically indicated, and they've looked at this from every angle so that they can see how they can justify putting in the power infrastructure for as cheaply as has been quoted. And then the fact that if we put that power infrastructure in there, the other property owners that have already been given leases to the property, to properties that are surveyed, certainly can go ahead and move forward in developing. I know that when I was down at Ms. Gumatauto's house, right in this area here, there were like four sisters who had gotten Chamorro Land Trust properties. They've already cleared it. They're just kind of like, you know, as they dig each shovel in to build their foundations, you know, they're hoping, oh my gosh, we hope that we can get the power in. So on the one hand, I can, I guess over the years I've learned that one way to get yourself overwhelmed is to try and, you know, just eat that elephant all in one bite as opposed to just one bite at a time. And if I leave the legislature and say, well, at least we've been able to get that one family, you know, giving them the quality of life that they're able to get, insofar as that opening up Pandora's Box, let me, I'm going to, I'll worry about that because I'm the one that they'll probably approach to introduce a bill. And I'll be the one to worry about that one. But for now, this, I decided that I wanted to introduce Bill 320. And unfortunately, in the legislature, which one is the right answer? The one that's got eight votes. And that's just the reality of it. But that's not to say that the arguments that you have raised are not valid. I think they are. But I think also the concerns that I have, as short-sighted as it may seem, is also valid. But I appreciate, I appreciate your forthrightness in the position that the land trust is taking. I truly appreciate that, and I appreciate the time that you have taken to come down here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I can always count on you to be forthright. Thank you. All right, do you have any? None? Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
May I change my mind?
You changed your mind? Okay, I'll, sure, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have to disagree with my Lola's primo. You know, Mr. Chairman, and Joe Borja, everybody, the infrastructure fund, I established that many years ago for the land for the landless program. I don't know what happened to the money, to the lots that were paid, Gi, As Lucas, Iya, Piguah, and Humaric. A lot of those lots were sold for $20,000. $2,500, Mr. Chairman. I'm not so sure whether there was an audit. Perhaps it would be nice to have an audit to find out actually where all that money went. And I think it is ludicrous to say that that infrastructure fund that I established would take care of all the infrastructure needs in the future. That's not right. There is that money, and I believe that, I have to agree with you, that we should take care of this situation because that's what the money is for, is not to take care of subdivision. It's a money that the commission can use, proceed to take care of needs such as the situation in Santana. So I ask that please disregard the comment made by the Director of Land Management, Safety Director Chamorro Land Trust. Because there is a need, and that's the purpose. There's a purpose of establishing infrastructure fund. That's why when it comes to land for the landless or the infrastructure or land, I go bananas. But I'm not going bananas today. I just want to plead for your compassion, and I want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman. And my sobrina, Serada, I'm asking you to please support this because $30,000 is nothing and is going to provide a humanitarian, humanitarian.
Okay. All right.
Purposes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm running out of voices.
Thank you. And but just to let you know, I won't disregard the testimony of Mr. Borja. I think he brings up valid points, and I would use his testimony to temper how we move forward with this bill. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay. There being no further questions on Bill 320, we'll consider then that bill as having been publicly heard. The next bill on the docket is Bill Number 321. Bill Number 321, it's an act to amend Section 2 of Public Law 33104 relative to extending the payment period for the expiration, for the land for the landless contracts and to waive the 10-year wait period prior to the transfer of property for exceptional circumstances. Signing up to provide testimony is Mr. Juan Finona, Vice Speaker Ted Nelson, and Mr. Mike Borja. Mike? Okay, Mr. Finona, please go ahead.
Good morning, Senator Adam. My name is Juan Finona. I am a voting resident of Marisol. In 1992, they held a lottery, Veterans' Preference First, for the Piguas subdivision land for the landless. When I was awarded a property that's 30 feet below the level of the road, that's the starting of my property and ending at 70 feet deep. At the time, Bakrus was the mayor. I requested to see if I could be relocated to a property that I can build something. I asked the late Rita Tanatongo when she was the mayor. I asked Shirley, the other mayor. And I took them until 2012 to transfer me, even if the property is smaller than the original one, but at least I can build. All right? Now, I'm for the bill because I believe I paid my money for that property, and I don't have to wait 10 years in order for me to do anything about it. Okay? It's wrong. One, I am a resident of Guam. Two, I am a disabled. Three, I'm a senior citizen. You know, if you guys can pass a bill to get very racist like this, I believe it's wrong for me to wait another 10 years to do anything with the property I paid for. Okay? And another thing, they told me that I have to have a building permit in order to get water into my property. I'm not going to build a solid concrete there. I want it for my plants. I plant lemon, coconut, bananas, et cetera, and they need water. I have to hold water from Nimitio, where I'm staying temporarily, to Marisol because I'm ashamed to ask water at my friends in Marisol. Then they told me I have to get a licensed contractor to put in 30 feet of line. He's charging me $2,500 bucks. Mr. Senator, I used to lay water lines for GWA. I put out stubouts for residents without the cost of the government or the contractor that I was working for. I did 4,000 water line, two-inch line, with me and my family to service 10 families in Jiggo. We fought a penny out of their pocket. And now they're going to charge me $2,500 for 30 feet, two-inch water line, and I have to get a certified person to do that? That's a slap in the face. I'm a disabled veteran. I am a past engineer myself. Why can't I do my own water line? Why do I have to pay somebody $2,500 bucks for two-inch, 30-feet line? In turn, I have to turn around again and pay $500 just for a meter, a water meter. Give me the damn parts, and I'll put it myself. I know how to do those things. Those are simple. Why do I have to pay that much? Shucks, I've been making $65 when I entered the Army. And now they're trying to take over $3,000 out of my pocket where my wife is disabled. I am disabled also. I mean, it's wrong of what this thing is going on. Okay? I am in favor of that bill. It's about time somebody steps up and waive that 10-year because I believe that's my property. I paid for it. I'm going to be paying the tax for that land, so I should be the one to say when and how I'm going to do my property. I asked Mr. Bolway here if he could stay and please hear my testimony because I think it's wrong for me to wait another 10 years when I waited 20 years already to get transferred to a suitable place. And also, the property that I was awarded or transferred to, people are using it to go back into their property. So what I did is I took out this map that I was given. I took out my 100-foot tape, and I find the eastman to where that property right away is at, and I opened it myself without charging the people. Those things, if it's only money that's keeping us alive, I think, like Mr. Nelson said, humanity should step in first and then money. Okay? 30 feet of water, Senator, for $2,500 at two-inch? I've been doing that project for the government of Guam for the longest time, and I've never had people pay anything that I provide to their property. And it does not cost the government any money. I took it from the contractor's interest, which I'm allowed to, to share the cost that is there. So how are you going to do this now is entirely up to you guys, but I, as a resident of Guam and a Vietnam veteran disabled, I feel I deserve more than what they're telling me within the government. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Finona. And my staff will be calling you to follow up on this matter of requiring you to use a certified plumber to have to lay that line on your private property. I've never heard of that. I've heard of GPA requiring that you hire a certified electrician to certify the installation, but not that you have to use a certified electrician to... Anyway, we'll follow up on that and get that part resolved. The bill would actually address the issue that you're talking about, and then I'll go ahead and ask Mr. Borja, and maybe he can add to the discussion. Mr. Borja?
I believe that if you've already paid your, for your land for the landless, your 10 years began after your final payment, and if it's beyond 10 years, you're already, you know, the land is fully yours for however you want it now. You can sell it if you want now, but it's not, but that wasn't...
Sir, I paid because I was transferred to another property in 2012.
Hold on.
Because of the transfer to a suitable property happened in 2012, and I paid installment payments until 2014, they told me 2014 until 2024 is when I can call it mine.
Okay. I gave you my business card. You're more than welcome to give me a call, and we can work on details of this issue, okay?
I think we've identified in the bill that it identifies three categories, so land for the landless applicants, and I think we have covered all of them. And if your situation creates a fourth category, then we'll also look at that before we report the bill out to make sure that that's covered. But let's go ahead and hear from Mr. Borja, please.
Again, thank you very much. Good morning. On Bill Number 321, the Department of Land Management, in its execution of Public Law 33104, found 41 land for the landless clients responding to our default notification with an appeal request for additional time to pay their account. Because the public law provided no discretionary authority to the Director of Land Management, a waiver on the time period for payment could not be offered. Bill Number 321 provides the ability to extend the time period to those land for the landless clients who responded to the letter, sent to them, or to the publication notice, and then they sought the appeal and asked for more time to pay for their accounts. Additionally, this bill permits the transfer of funds to offset the unbudgeted costs the Department of Land Management incurred in the notification of the land for the landless default accounts. The true amount is listed in this letter, which I'll provide you, but it comes out to a total of $4,944 for both postage and newspaper publication, and we request that the bill be modified to authorize this amount. Because Bill 321 provides additional payment time for those land for the landless clients who responded to our notices and had requested additional time to pay their account, and because this bill provides for the reimbursement of incurred costs, the department supports Bill Number 321.
Okay. Thank you very much. Speaker.
Mr. Chairman, no Chamorro. Taza, Chamorro, Debbie, Duma, Dudelac, Olba, Auburn, needs a land for the landless. And I established, in todo 21, the Mangatong, Susan Augustine, Speaker, Tommy Tanaka, and in establish a land for the landless, the bullet it among the man, how can it be possible to have... How can it be possible to have land for the landless, First Lucas, land for the landless, Iya Sumana Ginsikau, land for the landless, Melissa, land for the landless, Yumara? Mr. Chairman, it was a miracle. I guess it was the help of God and my fellow senators and the governors. I worked with, I think, three governors in coming up with all those subdivisions, but I didn't want to make one point before him. The Yumara subdivision, Mr. Chairman, is legislated. We, Albert De Pasne, and I think Sichil, we identified the owners and the lot number through legislation. So none of those people can be even eliminated or be picked up. As a matter of fact, we, at the time, if you are military, military, or you're in school, or veteran, or Malongo, whatever it is, Debbie Dun, Manoi, Tsansa, Putitano, there will never be another land for the landless again. Ta'za, Dampun Fanuda, Ta'nu, for $2,500, which we did. Ungan, Barotu, Guam, Comacio, Iriadium, Lo Imbendi, Itano, Parei Chamorro, Sia, Enige, Inengeko, Inenge Mami, Nimpa Sasa, Secretaries, Augustine, Tanaka, and Shariula, Dr. King and Tordu. Mr. Chairman, por favor, have Mr. Borja, the thing related to Gloria, work with the mayor, work with the mayors in different municipalities, and locate all these 41 owners. When the thing came out, I called Mr. Borja. I told him about it. I also went to the someone on trust commission and complained that nobody, nobody should be denied. There you go. I'm not up and soon. Debbie, Ethani, Manmangas, Debbie, Lita, Spia, Tordu, Monisina, Patanoi, Isamoruta, Nitanu, Enige, Malaguna, Xiangen, Enige, Debbie, Lita, Cogui, Za, Malagola, Kira, Binoyu, Donkun, Zuma, Zee, Nix Tensun, but por favor, Munga Manoi, one year or two years, Na'ih, Missiang, five years, Ta'lu, Gatsun, Za, Fandana, See, Mr. Borja, The Ni, Chamorro Land Trust, Za Ni Mayot, and I have to repeat this. Za Fandmasbia, Edusia, Ilanungrus, Ni Manilinquendi, Guam, Mangai, Kiloko, Guam, Nasakwa, Managa, Guam, Anmatay, Engi, Anmatay. Mr. Chairman, Debbie, Edusia, Natano, Dunaugatu, Giasakwa, Or Dunaugatu, Anmatay, Tordi, Nusamku, Dunaugatu, Ki Fama Gua, por favor, Munga Ma'omut, please, for the sake of justice, they earn, they deserve these land, and this government should not be a part of trying to deny Isamoruta, Nila'ata, Gini, Getanota. Yesterday, the Tsangra, or even in the past, Na'ih, Go'benno, It began, Ngam, Adidiby, Isamorro, over $150 million, Gatsun, Timanma Papa, Isamoruta, Pago, For $2,500, Patanu, Nitanu, por favor, let's change, let's change our compassion. Let's reevaluate what we want to do. We want to give this land. People will deserve it. If after five years, Za, See, Commission, and the mayor cannot locate Or Timalago, Edi Landowners, Men, Amut, Lo, Alki'ongi, Na'ih, Landowners, Kumatungo, Na, Edusia, Natano, Pago, is worth forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, Pago, Nowra, Isamelashun, Isas Lucas, Isomata, Bulagiseno, Beautiful Land, Za Munga, Duminai, Edusia, Edu Fama Gonta, Edusia, Natano, Mr. Chairman. And again, I appeal to my nephew, Tony, and you, Mr. Chairman, to please, and the members of the Commission, Pasqual, and Mrs. Santos, and Tordi, Commission, por favor, Azuda Fama Gonta, Azuda, Edi 9,000, Ni Aprika, Munga, For the Last, Munga, por favor, Ma'omut, Edusia, I Correntai, Uno, Ni Recipient, Gini, Ki Land for the Landless, Mr. Chairman. And I know that you're compassionate, and I know that we have allowed big business, people, big companies, rebate to all the government, thousands and thousands of dollars, Pago, Di, Fama Gonta, Patanu.
Okay. Ta'fana komprindi, Te Shpia, Stena Biu, Poroma'omut, Itano, Gini, Ta'ka, Okay?
I understand, Mr. Chairman.
Pa'ra Ta'Spia, Impeñu, Ta'Manu, Pa'ra Ta'fana komprindi?
That's my point.
Za, Ta'hu'sumi, Leblu, Za Sine, Manhono, Pago, Za Timan Malago, Za Timan Intirishawn, Itano, Pa'ra Ta'zu'le, Za Natano, Ta'Na'ih, Za Timan Mangoga, Go'ki, Ki Chamorro Land Trust, Pa'ra, Imputantino, Komprindi, No'na, Ti, Te Shpia, Pa'ra Ta'ka.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I said.
Esta, okay.
Then after, after the commission, and the mayors, ex-los, all efforts to contact these land recipients.
Esta, esta. Manakomprindi.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. And I want to thank you again for this opportunity and appeal to my primawer. Don't forget, my wife is looking at you, Mr. Borja.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. This must it? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to bring the committee up to date on what we have done with the Land for the Landless program according to the public law that was enacted. We made notification through mail to all the 391 default accounts. We provided the publication notice to all the mayors and the municipalities that they were affected. And now we are in the process of visiting each and every site to determine whether or not anybody is residing on the land. And to date, we found none. But the bill does provide adequate language to engage with them in a different basis so we can work with them as well. If we do find people that are duly authorized to be on the land because that was what they received, and they're already, and they're there, but yet they have not paid for their account. So we're looking at every one of these before we make the transfer over to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission.
Great, thank you, and I appreciate the due diligence that you're providing for that. Okay? So if there's no further questions, we'll consider Bill 321 as having been duly heard, and we'll move forward to the next bill. We have Bill 322-33, which is an act to rezone lots, 2260 and 2261, municipality of Baragata, from agricultural A-zone to school S1 zone. We'll go ahead and, just as a matter of orientation, put up on the screen here the property that we're talking about. Okay. So this here is the property that we're talking about. I believe this is Route 15, back road to Anderson. I believe down in here is the Guam Power Authority headquarters. This here is the golf course, the Navy Golf Course. And over in here is the football field. So we're talking about property that is somewhere in here. Next slide, please. So here's another, here's another, just to orientate us, the Nimitz Golf Course, Price Elementary Schools down here, back road to Anderson. We're talking about an area somewhere in here. Next slide. So this here is the lot that we are talking about. And to be able to gain access to that, there has already been established an easement that has actually been surveyed and has been properly severed out to provide an access road from Route 15 into that property. Next slide. So this here is that road, the existing easement. There's no road right now, but there is an existing easement that has been established to be able to provide access into the properties in here and to the lots that we are talking about today. Next slide. Okay. I believe this is, the existing easement is this one here. Right? It goes up, up to where the property is at. Now, in the bill, it proposes to change the zone. Next slide. Do you have the one with that one? I guess this area right now is Zone Agriculture, and the Guam, Guam Academy Charter School wants to build a school in there, so it will require a rezoning. The bill, however, the way it's languished, well, will authorize a rezoning through legislative action. Normally rezoning is taken, is done through the Guam Land Use Commission. But in this case, I have agreed to introduce a bill to rezon that property through legislative action. But there's also a contingency in the bill in that the construction permit for the school that's to be built in here will be contingent upon the construction of this road. So in other words, if that road doesn't get constructed, then DPW would not be able to issue a construction permit. By opening up this road, then what it does is it opens up access into the area in here, to the properties that are in there, which are private properties. Of course, as we go through the legislative zoning process, we will be getting input from the agencies, as they normally would when a rezoning request goes through the Chamorro Land Trust, when it goes through the Guam Land Use Commission. I would like to ask Mr. Borja, if you can, did you have testimony, Mr. Borja? You don't? Okay. Land management, or there was just no testimony to be given? You're silent. Okay, fine. All right. So then I'll go ahead and receive testimony from... Okay? Madam Chair, you want to go ahead and start, and then maybe introduce the people at the table that's with you. All right. Now, I just want to make it very clear that this bill deals only with the rezoning of that property. It does not address other issues that may have to do with financing and all that. Okay?
Thank you.
That will be, that is something that is handled by a separate committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is Fay Valencio Valles, currently the chairwoman for the Guam Academy Charter School. I have with me here today the rest of our members of the Board of Trustees, my vice-chair, Mr. Terry DeBolt, Mr. Ruina Secarías, Trustee Ruina Secarías is the current secretary for the board. I believe I see trustee, have a look. Henri, have a look. Trustee Big Paris is here, too. Who's missing? Oh, Ruina's here. Oh, Trustee Richard Kimball. That makes up three parents of the membership of the board. Trustee Ruina, Trustee DeBolt, and Trustee Kimball, all parents of the children of the Charter School. I also, oh, Dr. Jackie Syre is also part of us, one of the IT professors with the University of Guam. Together with us today, too, is our principal, Principal Mary Mafness, and our Assistant Vice Principal Terry Cruz. Trustee Thishus Mediola is currently the president of PTO. Is he here? And I believe we have our counsel, Mr. Attorney Lenny Rapadis, and our newly hired CEO, Mr. Vince Leonguera. Smile, Vince. I'd like also to acknowledge our consultant, the advocate for my center, Marilyn Manibusen. We come here with grateful heart, Senator, grateful for the many blessings that our Lord has bestowed upon our Charter School organization, including the introduction of now Bill 322-33 by you, Mr. Chairman. The municipality of the recently acquired land lots 2260 and 2261-1 in the municipality of Baragata is grateful for the efforts of the staff, of the Honorable Nerissa Underwood, and the collaborative work between her office and Mr. Joe Borja of your office. Grateful for the discussions with the author of the charter law, the Honorable Speaker Judith Wong Pan, the dialogue with Honorable BJ Cruz, Vice Speaker, Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations and Ageddication, and the many conversations with the rest of the centers like the policy advisor for, Chief Policy Advisor of Honorable Senator Mike San Nicolás, Mr. Jose, Mr., sorry, Mr. Manuel, and the different meetings we had with the minority group led by Honorable Senator Tony Hada, Senator Tom Morrison, Senator Jim Espaldón, and Senator Brad McGrady, and the different, also telephonic conversations with Senator Tina Munia Barnes and Senator Dennis. We're able, we're not able to meet with the other centers as they are probably off island, but we would like to make time once it is convenient for them to meet with us. The GAC facilities expansion program started in September 2013. The board authorized the board development consultant to prepare an expansion plan examining all the alternatives available to make room for the growing demand of families who want to enroll their children. It sad in our hearts to advise them that we didn't have any vacancies, and even if we wanted to offer an additional class for the grade level in demand, we couldn't because we didn't have the space to accommodate them. We present a brief executive summary that chronicles... We present a brief executive summary that chronicles the events and the actions of the Guahan Academy Charter School to justify our request for legislative rezoning of the parcels of land that we recently acquired. An advanced copy was earlier provided to your office, Mr. Chairman. The summary not only narrates the historical background, but attaches exhibits, documents which validates each undertaking that we took in. Senators, the first two years were indeed difficult period, but also an experience which strengthened our faith to trust in the Lord. We are encouraged that parents and guardians of our students remain faithful to their children's education at Guam's first Charter School. Their fidelity is the compelling catalyst for the board and management to strive to provide the quality education our children so deserve, and to seek and build a facility that will make available the gym, to play basketball, and other recreational activities instead of using the parking lot of our current Tijan campus. A facility that will incorporate the auditorium for school assemblies and other functions, a library, a faculty resource center, and the list could go on. December last year was memorable, Christmas blessing for GACs, when a landowner whose ancestral land had just been returned approached the board and asked if we were able, if we were looking for land to build a school. The size of the property was ideal, and the cost per square meter was a bargain for land that is for sale around the neighboring area. As you easily pointed, there were already three schools in that same vicinity. Our legal counsel reviewed the legal authority and acquisition instruments. They were executed and recorded with Department of Land Management. The property is currently Zone Agriculture, and the zoning laws thus allow a school to be built under a conditional use permit. However, it is the position of the board to rezone the property as a school and S1-zone solely for its intended use as a school and for no other purposes. Aside in our executive summary, the board chose to pursue the route of legislative rezoning for several eminent reasons. The most critical reasons are, one, GAC's lease with the government of Guam for Tijan campus expires this month. However, an amendment currently, an MOA, will extend incubation period for another year to June 2017. The time period, though, for the administrative process is not conducive for our facilities' expansion plan timeline. Number two, one of the requirements of the US financing is that property be appropriately zoned or is undergoing a legitimate zone change process. GACs receive a notice of eligibility from USDA, and the deadline for the full application for this funding is July 31, 2016. The funding is for 100% financing at a rate of 2.875. Senator, Bill 322-33 will truly jumpstart the financing process for the Guahan Academy Charter School. Part of the facilities financing will be opening the primary access from Route 15 near the main entrance of the Gloria Nelson Public Utilities Building. The route will be along easements designated by the Guam Ancestral Land Commission at the time of the return of these other ancestral lands. Along this access, we will also be installing a main water line and power lines from Route 15 to the school. Our wastewater disposal system will be a self-contained treatment system. These improvements are contained within our master plan, which is currently under concept, and the associated costs are included within our construction budget planning. We have already embarked on the archaeological survey and the environmental assessment. Additionally, our approach is to alternate, is to have an alternate energy and clean power to reduce reliance on fossil fuel. It's not, it is not an afterthought, but an integral part of our planning efforts from day one. Although our DOI interior grant was not awarded because of the lack of available funds toward all these notable applications, we are pursuing either grants, private sector provider agreements, or through our construction loan. We will incorporate features for efficient storm drainage system, permeable hardscape surfaces, judicious water retention plant beds, hardy shade trees, and cooling landscaping. Reminds me of the way the Coast 360 was built. It was all very energy efficient and so environmentally friendly in all aspects of its building. The Guam Tropical Energy Code, the International Energy Conservation Code, and modern construction method and materials will be the primary drivers behind our energy-smart green school design. Construction and operations, low heat, low drop appliances and fixtures will reduce electrical energy consumption with a great reduction of 20% minimum for a facility of this size over the next five years. Our facilities program will maintain reflective surfaces and cooling paints and coverings. Guahan Academy Charter School is planning the entire project to require less water and power consumption than other contemporary facilities. Our efforts will also provide groundwater recharge in accordance with the cinema and the Guam Storm Drain Manual. We are also taking a hard look at conserving resources and reducing waste. For instance, much of our instruction and more in the future will be via electronic tablets and workbooks. This will allow us to reduce the volume of bound books and materials in favor of the modern learning platforms, which is cloud or server-based, and I bet you, a lot cheaper than the hard copies of what we are currently using right now. Through the use of the low-flush plumbing fixtures, I learned to really look at this because I didn't realize it takes 14, 14, was it 14-something gallons of water on the old-school toilet bowl versus a, what, five gallons of what is now efficient flushing system for the new toilet bowl design now? And I thought that would be, that is wise. We will propose and implement our own initiatives. Am I there? Did I lost everybody? Sorry. Sorry. Thank you, Trustee DeBolt. I was just excited because all of these, when we were meeting, I said, just make sure we're not going to spend so much money, because right now, the school itself is paying like $5,000 just for power. And I am so close in just getting some of this energy and cost-efficient guys to put all those, what do you call those? The sun, the solar panels. But it's all containment cost, so we can give the best material for our students. Where am I now? Right here. The intention of mentioning all of the above is to notify you, Mr. Chairman and Senators, that we are cognizant of all the regulatory requirements, which will be, which will comply in any addition we will propose and implement on our own initiative. We pledge to be diligent towards our funds from our government, and we are very grateful for every penny that comes to finance the needs of our students and the continuing operation of our school. We will continue to empower our children to access learning options that work well with them and to attend to our crucial mission of early education, which, by the way, I know that we have parents as well and staff of the Guahan Academy that I forgot to recognize. We have very strong testimony from, I think, the parents of Audrey and Lucas, that truly believe in our direct instruction form of education. I want to express and emphasize how blessed and I am to an assertive and collaborative team and my fellow trustees. I couldn't, I couldn't thank, I couldn't thank these guys enough for the time, the amount of time that they invest away from the work. And it all is because, all of the agenda that we take on are just all, a lot of it are just very much needed by the school to continuously operate. We're just so happy that we have the CEO now, who is a whiz in education, that could assist us in that aspect of the operation of the school. Then it was all business and finance, we need to take care, and then Principal Merritt and on the education part. Now we have Mr. Vince Leonguero, who is a welcome and added, a good addition for the other aspect of the operation of the Guahan Academy Charter School.
Thank you, Vince.
For skipping out of the loop. We recognize the multitude of work ahead of us will be very challenging, but the mission, goals, and objectives of Guahan Academy Charter Schools remain the impetus to weather the challenges. It's all about our kids, Senator. It's all about the 500 then and now, 1,000 or 1,500 in the next five years or so, that we would like to be able to focus on really bringing in the new facilities for these children. In closing, I would like to share a very meaningful graduation congratulatory message from the chairwoman of the council, the Guahan Academy Council, Mrs. Rosa Salas Palomo. And may I quote, "Six years ago, the Board of Trustees of Guahan Academy Charter School submitted its application for a charter school employing the direct instruction methodology. History was made. The application was approved, and thus Guahan Academy Charter School became the first Charter School on Guam. Congratulations. Three years ago, after some challenging times securing a facility, Guahan Academy Charter School opened its doors to 500 kindergarten through 10th grade students in Tijan, another historical event. Congratulations. This year, Guahan Academy School celebrates its first two graduates, brilliant Bree Sublin and Jamie Lynn Zamora, another measure, another major milestone in the history of Guam First Charter School. Congratulations." Congratulations are indeed in order. Accomplishment and milestone of Guahan Academy Charter School should be celebrated, unquote. Indeed, we celebrate, Senators. We also join and celebrate with the National Alliance for Public Charter Schools in celebrating the 25th anniversary of all charter schools in the nation, with about 3 million students enrolled in over 6,800 charter schools. Two years ago, we were fortunate to have the author and founder of the nation's charter school, former Senator Amber Junge, who visited Guam and became our guest during the inaugural charter school celebration. To accomplish the mission and goals of our charter school and add another milestone in the history of Guahan Academy Charter School, our students, administrators, faculty, and staff seek the support of the Guam Legislature in the passage of Bill 322-33, rezoning lots 2260 and 2261-1 from agriculture zone, from A-zone to school zone S1-zone. Undang kaluuna sijus maasi from all of us at Guahan Academy Charter School family. God bless y'all. Ramik salamat po.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other testimony? Are you going to give testimony? Okay.
Hafeday Honorable Chairman, Tom Ada, members of your committee, and Minority Leader, Tony Ada, thank you for being here. My name is Vincent Leonguero, the Chief Executive Officer for the Guahan Academy Charter Schools. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, and she's not kidding when she say they meet often, hard-working board, the school administrators, who are behind me to my left, the faculty, staff, and parents of our school, some of whom are present today, I wish to extend our sincere appreciation and gratitude for your expeditious response to our request for legislation and for timely scheduling a public hearing to receive testimony on Bill 322-33. More importantly, I wish to personally thank you for your sponsorship of Bill 322-33, and we are humbled by such support. It shouldn't surprise anyone that, of course, I'm here to testify in support of Bill 322-33. We thank you and Senator Nerissa Underwood's staff for meeting with our board and for providing us with information and guidance that led to the development of Bill 322-33, a bill that proposes to rezone lots 2260 and 2261, and it should note, -1, in the municipality of Baragata from its current zone status of A for agriculture use to S for school use. Our request to change property, our property from A to S zone status is not inconsistent with the conditional use for properties that are zoned A. It can be used for a school, but only on a conditional basis, not on a permanent basis. Thus, our request, as you stated so ably, is based on making permanent what is now only allowable conditionally. The normal route for seeking to rezon property, you shared very eloquently with us. We're not following the normal route. I'm going to cut short my testimony. And as the chair said, we opened our doors in August 2013, and Tijan facilities are made available to GACs by the governor's office on behalf of the government of Guam and in support of the first charter school authorized under local law. We were successful in securing the use of the premises as a startup charter for a period not to exceed three years. A formal MOA was signed, but expires in June 30, 2016, but we have since negotiated an extension for an additional year. Once the AG and the governor sign the amendment, MOA will be authorized to stay until June 2017. The reason we are seeking, we're here before you today, seeking an expedited zone change via legislation is because of the time pressure to move off the Tijan premises and into our own facility. Additionally, we are in the process of finalizing loan from US Department of Agriculture. This loan will provide us with the financing necessary to construct a school campus on the property that we acquired, but this property needs to be permanently zoned strictly for school use. Based on communication with USDA staff, we need to complete our final application to USDA next month, and having our property zoned S is vital to our application as it provides assurances to the federal agency that we have acquired the right property for the right use. Our request to rezon lots 2260 and 2261-1 is simple. We are not proposing to rezon our property for controversial use. In fact, in order to realize our dream of building our new campus, we would have to bring in the necessary infrastructure such as roads, water, and power. Such improvements can only benefit our neighbors. We cannot see any downside to our planned investments. Our property and the surrounding land were recently returned by the Ancestral Land Use Commission, and improvements to our property provide critically needed access to utilities that would normally be cost prohibitive for owners of the recently ancestral lands. And in listening to the testimony of the property down in Santa Ana, this exactly, would provide that type of access to our neighbors. As you will hear in testimony today, we have the support of the mayors and their municipal planning council in the villages of Baragata and Minila. We will follow all required procedures to rezon property via a legislative route. We wish to be good neighbors and good citizens in our new community. Your support to Bill 322-33 will not only help our school realize its dream to be on its own campus, but will also allow us to finally have a place to call home. This planned campus allows us to recruit faculty, students, and families who will no longer have to worry about where they will teach and learn from year to year. Please help us become a prominent and permanent fixture in charter education on Guam. Please help us achieve our motto, "Guahan Academy Charter School, Guam's first choice in education." We respectfully ask that you vote to pass Bill 322-33, not just in this committee, but as it is brought before the full body for consideration for passage into law. Sijus maasi.
Thank you. Anybody else on panel that wants to provide testimony?
Hafeday Senators, my name is OJ Titanow, and I wear a few hats at the Charter School. I, too, am going to cut my testimony short as it echoes what our CEO and our board chair, Madam Fay, has already spoken to. It also mirrors the written testimony that was submitted by our administrators, Ms. Mary Mafness and Ms. Terry Cruz. Speaking on behalf of my fellow educators sitting behind me and the rest of the educational team and support staff, the dedicated space that this rezoning and allowing us to build our new campus would create is tremendous. As a special ed advocate, this would provide the adequate spaces for therapies and stuff. Moreover, in talking about how it would affect the neighborhood, Guahan Academy Charter School is the first and only current school partnership with the Guam Behavioral Health Prevention Team. We have a three-year grant that allows us to advocate for alcohol, tobacco prevention, and education, and we aim at extending our reach beyond our doors under the leadership of our development director, who is the project director for this grant, Ms. Merritt Manibusen. We'd be able to campaign around the neighborhood and extend, again, the reach of our advocacy for prevention into the neighboring areas by means of flyers, posters, and murals within our campus, and this is prohibited in our temporary setting. We are able to host other partners in the community, and we can champion community efforts that are aligned with Guahan Academy's mission and vision within our school with this new facility. Lastly, again, cutting the testimony short, the building of this new facility and with our target accreditation as the co-chair of accreditation, we have to maintain certain standards to keep this accreditation running, so we can ensure the community that we will uphold the services that we have and not just provide the minimum to get by, but exceed those standards so that we continue to be accredited. As an educator and a prevention advocate, it's my personal belief that there's no better zoning for a community besides a school zone, which will prevent other commercial businesses and other establishments in the area to be further away from the community that we're trying to target. This is a prime education zone with other schools within the area, and I believe that our neighbors, knowing the prevention and healthy lifestyle advocacy that Guahan Academy Charter School is offering, will champion the rezoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes, I'll call you up, Mr. Merritt, in a shortening. I would just ask Ms. Valles that you have your engineering consultant go over the language of the bill. of the bill, in particular, Section 3, which puts the issuance of a construction permit as being contingent upon the construction of the access road into the area. Because as I understand it, you can actually have access into that property through a pathway by the football field, correct? I mean, so if you wanted to get into there now, you could do that without building that road, right? So I just want to emphasize that before we report the bill out, that your engineering consultant take a close look at this language, because it is certainly not the intent of myself to, you know, to freeze everything until that road is built. I mean, in the meantime, while those things are getting done, you may be one to be taking advantage of the time to be doing the clearing of the property, and so your engineering consultant needs to take a look at the language on Section 3, in particular, 3B, to make sure that, and it may require getting with DPW to, just to clarify, that the construction permit that the bill is referring to is for the vertical construction and not for to begin, go in there and beginning clearing and cutting and whatever else horizontally. Okay? Right. Well, yeah. Well, what we can do is, he can take a look at this, and if he thinks that there's, that the language as it provides or as suggested maybe by DPW needs to be changed, then that can be done with the staff, my chief staff, and we can get that addressed. Other than that, I don't have... Senator, do you have any questions? Okay. Other than that, I don't have any questions off the school board unless there's anything else you want to add. None?
I think they've already all spoken on the board's behalf. The points have been made. I think there's more than enough information that, in case anybody has any questions, the executive summary has been provided for public view as well as for the legislative review. However, there is testimony from one of the parents, which we will, they were intending on coming today to present the testimony. Mr. and Mrs. William and Sandra Lucas, I'm not sure if you want us just to provide a hard copy or if you would like for us to go ahead and...
You can go ahead and read it in for the record.
I'll go ahead and read this, because they are very active parents. They have, and I think the letter is self-explanatory. Dear Chairman Ada, unfortunately, I am not able to make the public hearing schedule for today. However, I did want to state my support for this bill rezoning lots 2260 and 2261, municipality of Baragada, from agricultural A-zone to school zone S1, in order to build a Guam Academy Charter School. I have been a resident of Pagat Mangilo for the past seven years and a resident of Guam for more than 30 years. As a foster parent of four elementary children, three of whom have attended Guam Academy for the last two years, it is my personal opinion that the land should be rezoned to build the academy for the following reasons. One, obviously, having another quality institution of education is going to be beneficial to the island. Two, charter schools provide a choice to parents who cannot afford private schools. Three, having attended the same school from first to 12th grade in a rural community in Michigan, it is my experience that this provides stability and school pride. Four, Guam Academy's involvement with the Trades Academy is very beneficial. I have a son who loves to fix things. This academy would be an asset to him once he reaches high school. Five, our children are benefiting very much from direct instruction. Our daughter, who is going into fourth grade, can easily read sixth-grade level books and comprehend what she is reading. And six, we are personally excited about the new plans for the facility, especially the fine arts theater, swimming pool, gymnasium, and field. Our children, who are very gifted in many of these areas, as well as any other child who attends this school, will greatly benefit from high-quality facilities such as this. Thank you very much for writing this bill. I appreciate you taking the time to hear my testimony and take it into consideration, Mr. William Lucas.
Thank you very much, Mr. DeBol. Okay, I don't have any further questions off this panel. I have, so you go ahead, Predu. I have Mayor Nito Bloss, who has signed up. Mayor, did you want to give... Mayor Matanani, did you want to give any comments? Mayor Bloss, did you want to make comments, provide testimony? I have Mr. Pelkey. You wanted to give oral testimony? And then, of course, the Rowena Zacharias, that I guess you were going to read, you were going to read the testimony? Okay, all right. All right, so we'll start with the order of signing. Mayor Nito Bloss, go ahead and proceed with your testimony.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I have a problem with my voice addiction, so I'm going to ask my, Mr. Pelkey here, a member of my municipal planning council, to read mine.
Okay. Go, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Senator Tom Ada, and your colleague, distinguished colleague, Senator Tony Ada. Honorable Senators, my name is Nito Bloss, and I'm the mayor of the municipality of Mangilo.
You're reading on behalf of Nito Bloss?
On behalf, yeah. I'm reading his word, and to my left is the mayor. This is his testimony, and I'm going to read it as he wrote it.
Okay.
I'm hereby to offer support to the rezoning of these two lots to a school zone. I support this rezoning because there are several families from Mangilo proper and from Latty Heights who sent their children to Guam Academy Charter School. There have been occasions where families were not able to register their children because there were no vacancies in the grades that their children would have enrolled in. With the expansion of the charter school, this would allow these families a better opportunity to get their children enrolled at Guam Academy Charter School. Mangilo has the following educational institutions: George Washington High School, the Guam Community College, the University of Guam, and the Pacific Island University. The addition of another educational institution in municipality of Baragada and municipality of Mangilo, posture central Guam as the center of education in Guam. We welcome this expansion in education in our communities. More importantly, we understand that the public access roads from the Pagat area will be developed, open, and paved to include water lines and power. We thank Guam Academy Charter School, this is in their school expansion plan. This is a major improvement and undertaking to improve the area of ancestral lands that are now being returned to the original landowners. These landowners will benefit much from this infrastructure development, which normally will not have been able to do themselves or wait for a long, long time for the government to do it. I also want to thank Senator Tom Ada for assisting in this development and facilitating over the rezonings so that the only purpose that this land will be used is for a school. Again, thank you, Senator Ada, and members of the Guam Legislature, for the opportunity to have me offer support of Bill 322-32 to rezone these two lots into a school zone. It's a good thing for the families all over the island who send their children to attend Guam's first charter school. Sijus maasi na judum midu para escuela en Guam Academy. I may just add that we have also a Japanese school of Guam, a Japanese school, and so that's most, every nation have the schools in Mangilo. You know, let us fresh back. They're all coming to Guam. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and defer to Mayor Matanani. Go ahead.
Good morning, Senator Ada and Chairman, Senator, Honorable Senator Tony Ada. Sir, can I comment on the, you know, the building of the road to the Academy Charter School? You know, the reason why I want to comment on this situation, because this situation is similar to a lot of the situations that I've been asked about, and the problem is I don't have any answers. You know, where, let's say, the Academy Charter School is way in the inside, and when they build the road, everybody benefits from it, and that's really a good thing. But when somebody lives way in the inside that cannot afford it and tries to get loans so, you know, they can build their dream home, it's quite a battle. So are we doing anything to compensate the person that spends like $50,000 to get infrastructure and everything that's needed to their homes? You know, most especially in the way, when you're driving inside and he gets his, he or she's road fixed, and there's millionaires on the left and on the right, and they're passing by, and they benefit, is there something that we're doing to try to help this person that gets this $50,000 loan and almost can't have enough money to build his house? You know, I've been put in a position and asked why, and, you know, it's not, I don't think it's Mr. Borres' fault, or Land Management, or David Camacho, because he's Tomorrow Land Trust, but this thing has been going on. Is there anything that we're trying to do to compensate people that spend money to get their dream house going, and then other people on the way in compensates him or her?
I really don't know. I do know that in the case of the utilities, I think, and this is why I wanted the engineering consultant to make sure that he nails it down with the utilities, but if the school brings in the utilities, I believe for the next 15 years, anybody who ties in to those utilities would have to pay in to that infrastructure, and then that would be credited to the school. So that applies, that I'm pretty certain of in the case of the utilities. In the case of the road, I don't know that, I don't know of any provision that would require those adjoining landowners to now have to contribute in to that road. That road is a public easement now, you know.
So is it the government that's responsible to repay the...
You know, most of, those are the ancestral lands that already been, I mean, did it to the privately owned, so I've been asked to start helping them open a temporary access or road to the property. Everybody, all these people that have been assigned there have already been, what do you call it, surveyed. The issue is this, is they haven't identified the easement. I'm already been asked to help temporarily open the future easement to all this property. So there's a movement, and I'm starting to help them. As a matter of fact, I'm willing to help the charter now, provided you approve soon the zoning thing, so I can start supporting not only the charter school in them, but the surrounding. There's a lot of people in the surrounding area asking my office to help them just get a temporary road to their property.
So in this particular case, this easement has already actually been surveyed and severed out, and that was done previously, but for others, I'm not aware. So maybe before we go on with further discussion, let me, are you finished, Mr. Matanani?
Well, I have my testimony to...
Okay, I'm sorry. Please, go to seat.
But, you know, before I start, I want to thank you for, you know, stepping up to the plate and helping the charter school with this bill, 322-33. I want to thank you for that. Anyways, I'll just read my testimony. Good morning, honorable senators. For the record, my name is Mayor Rudy Matanani from the beautiful village of Jigo. Thank you. I am here in support of Bill 322-33. I want to congratulate the administrative staff, and most especially, former Senator Marilyn Manibusin and the parents, for calling me to support this bill, for I would not have known about it and be here today. I am very thankful for being notified, because I always want to support the children for a better education as they are our future leaders. I'm most especially honored because there are 55 children from Jigo attending Guam Academy Charter School. This is most important, because this is where the root starts for the Guam Academy Charter School. Recently, I spoke to President of the Mayor's Council of Guam, Mr. Paul McDonald, for support of the rezoning of Lot 2260 and 2261, Baragada, through Bill 322-33, from A agriculture to S1 school zone, through a resolution from the Mayor's Council of Guam. I see no problem with this to follow through if we all work together. As the representative of the Jigo Municipal Planning Council and a member of the Guam Education Board for the Mayor's Council of Guam, I urge all leaders and all concerned to support Bill 322-33. The Guam Academy Charter School deserves to have their roots extended for the benefit of the children and their future. Thank you in advance for your support, Mayor Matanani from Jigo.
Thank you very much, and I think that is good. I'm glad that you have approached the council to also provide a resolution of support, and the committee will wait for that resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Because that's very important.
Yes, we're going to...
Thank you for taking that initiative. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Pelkey?
Honorable Chairman, I think everybody said everything I was going to say.
Okay, identify yourself.
But for the record, I am Bob Pelkey.
Okay.
And I'm a member of the Municipal Planning Council of Mangilo, and we're the Village for Culture, Education, and Sports, and in that light, I'm here to support the Guam Charter Academy School application for rezoning to a school zone. I think the infrastructure improvements that they're going to bring in is going to benefit our members of our community, and I just want to congratulate Vince on his new job. It's a hard job, and the chairwoman of the Guam Charter Academy, and we wish them good luck, and I hope that your bill gets passed at the legislature.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Vice Speaker Nelson, you had signed up. Did you want to give oral testimony? No, Vice Speaker Nelson. I saw you, you're giving your support? Okay. And the last one I had was Tinell Mori. Okay, fine. Now, earlier I noticed there were two young students that were out there holding the sign, and I think, looks like they left already. Okay, that's too bad, because I wanted to bring them in. I'm sure they worked hard on that banner that they did, and I wanted them to be a part of this, because, I mean, the fact that they're here participating in the process is important, and I wanted to make that impression on them, but they left already. Just a couple of administrative things. Inasmuch as I would like to report out this bill as soon as I can, as soon as, you know, we can, there are some things that we have to wait for, which then constraints me from reporting it out immediately. We have to get the, was it the zoning? The land zoning consideration report, which I believe the agencies have 45 days to submit that, and so we get... that, and so we get reports, input from EPA, from the various agencies, the same report that they would submit if it was to go through the Land Use Commission, and they have 45 days to do that. If they don't submit, then we can go ahead and proceed forward with the bill. There's also other things that we may need to do, and that is to sit down and take a final look at the language of the bill and do a markup hearing, especially with input from the engineering consultant, to make sure that we don't unnecessarily tie things up, but I think it's important that that road be put in and that, you know, we don't forget about it after. I mean, I made it very clear, that was the only condition that I would, under which I would introduce this bill. Otherwise, I do not, I do not normally introduce legislative rezoning bills. Okay? Other than that, just waiting for that report, but in the meantime, we'll be working on getting the committee report ready, and so we have 45 days from today. Count out 45 days, so it may not be until July, maybe August, and if that causes any problem with your grant applications, then let's get together afterwards to see how we might be able to bridge that gap, maybe a letter from the committee or whatever. Okay? All right. So with that, then, we'll consider Bill 322-33 as having been duly heard, and, Senator, did you have any final things? Anything you want to say?
No, Mr. Chairman, you just brought up the concern about the grant application.
Yes.
And the 45 days, but you brought up a solution to that, and I hope that we'll be able to move forward.
Yeah, so this should not be the last time that we meet. We'll work together as we go along to make sure that we're bridging whatever gaps need to be bridged. Okay, so let me give my closing remarks. If there are no further testimonies, the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement certifies that this public hearing is complete, and this public hearing is now adjourned. It is now 11:35. Thank you.[1793.99][1793.99]